The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Chris Lester, and I am attending as Government Affairs Director for Thurston County Realtors Association. So as housing things come up and needs, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or the association, but I will be attending meetings this year. So just wanted to say hello. Thanks.
Welcome.
Welcome. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Can I suggest we move on to one or two short things and see if they can get here? If it can be more productive.
Why don't we do this up under City Managers' Report and kind of go that route?
Yeah.
Buy some time.
Cannon on the spot.
And is there any law that says we have to go to the diocese to read a proclamation? I mean...
So if you have a time. I would move approval of the amended 2023 federal legislative agenda.
Second.
That was pretty, I mean, I don't think any of us noticed. We took a vote on it. I don't think any, I don't think Dave or anybody noticed that we, that there was never a motion on the floor for that. That's very bizarre. It worries.
I'm happy to. I'll be brief and quickly turn it over to Shannon, who's really just done a fantastic job. Thank you so much for the members of COTEN. We know that there's a lot of stuff going on. It's a busy schedule. Really appreciate it. Certainly a warm welcome to our new representation. We've been really forward to helping, to working together and helping you answer any questions about what you think is fantastic, plenty of stuff going on.
Yes. First thing we should do is go around and do a quick introduction.
Thank you, of course. I'm Brian Inslo. I'm in contract lobbying.
State Senator-elect Drew Matt Kewen, Representative 35th District, and happy to have Lacey in the district and look forward to working with you all.
It's good to see you, Joe.
Lenny Greenstein, Council.
Hi, everyone. Jessica Bateman, Representative for the 22nd District.
Carolyn Cox, City Council, and I'm one of yours in the 35th.
Me too.
I'm Robin Vasquez. I'm on the Lacey City Council.
Michael Stedman, Council.
Malcolm Miller, Deputy Mayor.
I'm in the back.
Hi, Jen Burbidge, Director of Parks, Culture and Recreation.
Scott Agar, Director of Public Parks.
Perry.
Perry Edmond, City Clerk.
And of course, I'm Andy Reiter, the Mayor of Lacey. And it really is good to see the 35th part of Lacey. And I think one thing that's, I'm really proud of is the work that the 22nd, the 2nd, and now hopefully, you know, 35th, that we've all done together to, you know, make this community a better place for all of us. And I really appreciate the 35th now being a part of Lacey and being a part of the team. As we go in through our accomplishments from last year, and the accomplishments were great. You know, starting off with the $75 million Move Ahead Washington transportation package. You know, this is such an important part, especially within Squali River Delta. Of course, we're going to talk a little bit later of where that is at on the funding cycle and how important we believe it is to get that funded a little bit earlier in the cycle because time is of the essence when it comes to the Delta. But we really appreciate the $75 million in there. Sam Hunt from the 22nd was instrumental in getting, helping us get our public, our electric vehicle infrastructure in place. We've made a lot of progress on that. I think they're on their way. And we've had some supply issues trying to get that done, but that was amazing. Representative Bateman was scaring the $515,000 for the purchase of the Oxford Housing Pilot Program. Thank you for that. It's a, you know how great of a program that is, and we're really excited about bringing those resources to Lacey. And of course, we're working to find a nonprofit to get that in place as soon as possible. And of course, we also want to thank you for the work you've done on public safety, hosting the chief and myself to talk about the law and how we can, you know, strengthen it and making it better for our communities and still have law enforcement do the work they need to do in more equitable fashion. We appreciate your leadership on that. And of course, your leadership on the homeless crisis that we're still in. It's something that we are still feel like we're neck deep in. We appreciate the state really, you know, stepping up, especially recently on the right-of-way initiatives. We immediately put that to work and have some, several projects in the pipeline ready to go, and we really appreciate all of your work on that. We do, of course, have several different asks we're going to look at for this year, and we're going to get into that right now. You know, we have the Greg Cuyo Park improvements, the Emergency Operations Center, commercial airport siting, long-term funding solutions to support the right-of-way initiatives, to continue focusing on the I-5 corridor and to address law enforcement vehicle pursuits. And let's just go right into it and...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm Shannon Kelly Fong. I'm the Assistant City Manager. And I just really quickly, as a housekeeping item, if you could please turn on your mics when you're talking. There is a green button, and you press the push, and that should light up green, and that will indicate that the microphone is on.
So we're going to, another thing that we have this year is, at the end of, we have this new 2023 legislative manual that Shannon's going to talk a little bit about, something that we haven't had in the past and that we'll talk a little bit about. She'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. But our first priority is the, our accessibility improvements at the new Greg Cuyo Park. And I'm going to turn it over to the Deputy Mayor.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. The Greg Cuyo Park is something that, you know, the council is really passionate about. We, it will be the largest park in Thurston County, maybe even in two counties. And the city has spent general fund dollars to the tune of $3.25 million and secured grants and some state funding. Our request is going to be, you know, $500,000 to help with fund the ADA path and the inclusive playground. So I'm not going to talk too much about it. I know you guys know about it. I know you guys understand how important it is to us. And again, thank you for being here. So that's all I'm going to say about it.
If you have anything you want to add to that? Brian?
Just for a way of context, it is, it's located off of Carpenter Road in between like Hawks Prairie and Britton Parkway. So not too far from here, actually. And yeah, it is, you know, that's, it's in full build-out.
540 acres.
540 acres. So that's, you know, that's a section for roughly like a mile by a mile. So it is a really significant opportunity. And we've got a photo of it up here, and you can see it's all open space, and the intent is to largely preserve that. We're looking at for what we are calling Phase One. We do have, we have, we are exploring, in addition to local funds, a significant investment from the city, the existing kind of opportunities within other state grant programs. We believe that the number that we're asking for hopefully will be the last money in for Phase One and will really help create a first kind of community nexus to this before we build out and develop the whole, the whole park system with extensive trails and other things.
Yeah, we're, this is, was a great investment. Years ago, we were able to pick up this land that was really scheduled to be a neighborhood, and that we were able to turn into several different things, including more water rights for the city of Lacey. And we just keep on building upon that amazing investment we were able to make. After all these years, we are so excited. We got through this huge process, community process about what the community would like to see, and we're ready to go. And it's going to be exciting. We're going to see draws from, this is not just a Lacey park, for sure. This is going to be something that's going to be, you know, people are going to come from all over, 18-hole disc golf course, a championship-level disc golf course. And so this is one of those places where families will be going to for a long time, and we're very proud of it. So we appreciate your support on that. Next up is a capital budget request for the Emergency Operations Center.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, just on that topic, I could see this being also a venue for like state track and field and stuff like that in the future. So it's a quality of life thing. We could attract a lot more things than, you know, with our youth.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So...
Just a second. Do you have something about Greg Cuyo?
Yeah. So this is also a great tourist draw. This is going to be one of the biggest parks for disc golf, which is going to be a huge draw. It is a trending kind of a sport, and it'll really put Lacey on the map with tourist dollars as well. That and, you know, the preservation of the territory is also very important.
Great. Now, Councilmember.
Sure.
So we've been working for the last couple of years on the need for a new police station in Lacey. The current police station, which you might have seen when you came in, it's attached to this building, is about 15,000 square feet. It was built when our population was about 15,000 people. We're now closer to 60,000 and still trying to operate out of that police station. It doesn't work anymore, right? We're at that point. Well, we've been able to, we actually started on the process. We're going to build a new police station. It's going to cost about $50 million. We're doing it without raising a dime in taxes. So no increase to anyone's taxes. We're going to build a brand-new police station. So something we're pretty proud of. In, within that police station, though, we think it's important to have an emergency operations center. We don't have one currently in Lacey. We have basically a closet that we use as an EOC, but it's, it's not adequate, and it doesn't do the job. So what we're looking for is we need some, some help for the funding of that. We are looking for about a $500,000 capital request to build that EOC. It'll be 1,400 square feet. It'll be built to be able to handle any significant emergency or disaster that we have to deal with in this community. So we're hoping to get some help from the legislature on that one.
Yeah. I think this is going to be really important. The, and we're happy to share the plans of the new police station. And this part is going to be really important. The Emergency Operations Center, it seems like more and more, it's something that we desperately need, and we're just buying our, you know, whereas who knows what's the next disaster is going to happen, where we're going to like, why didn't we have something like this in place where we could have, you know, either saved lives or not have, you know, lost lives, where, you know, had a place where people knew they could come and make their situation, their horrible situation, a little bit better. And you just can tell just recently with all what's been going on with the emergencies, it seems like, you know, in this area. And so this is an important thing, and we'd be crazy not to find a way to get this funded and have this as a resource for our region. And, you know, and working with Thurston County and the other jurisdictions is really important, too. But we need this place to sort of do that. So I think this is a really important part. It's thinking ahead, too, and making sure we have the right resources in place for when we know unfortunately a disaster is probably going to happen at some point. Are we prepared for it? And to not have a place to be prepared for it is just, doesn't make sense at this point.
Additionally, and when it's not being used as an EOC, it will be a community meeting area of about, like I said, 1,400 square feet. So another thing that we need in our community.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you currently own the property where you plan to build the new police station?
We were just able to purchase the property from St. Martin's University.
Great. And when do you propose to break ground on this?
Chief.
Doesn't work.
Okay.
Okay, I'll talk loud. We're in currently the second phase of design. We're just going to 80% of the aesthetics for our designs. Hope to break ground at the beginning of next year.
So it was only a couple of years ago, we had the National League of Cities Conference down in LA. And, you know, we toured the emergency management facility in the police department and the fire department down there. And that night, the Santa Ana winds happened and the big fire. They had school buses all day long of kids coming in and out of there, learning about, you know, getting to know their police department, their fire department personnel, learning about natural disasters and what can flip your life upside down overnight, that kind of thing. So it's more than just a facility that's in need when, in the worst of the times. So... So just wanted to make sure that we think about that when we're spending these dollars.
The next one's a pretty simple one. I'm sure you've all heard about, but it's the commercial airport siting. And I'm really curious to get what your opinion on this after Councilmember Vasquez talks about a little bit.
Yeah. I don't know if you've heard, but they're talking about building an airport. So in 2019, the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission was formed, and they've been doing some work to narrow down the locations where they might either expand an existing airport or build a new one. They seem to settle on the airports that they examined back in 2022 not being sufficient. So they said, we need a greenfield site, and that was the February 2022 report. And now they've narrowed it down to 10 sites, and two of them are in Thurston County. And a number of different cities and jurisdictions have spoken out against citing an airport in Thurston County, and Lacey's on the list, as well as all of those other cities that you see. And the Thurston Regional Planning Council is actually in the midst of drafting a letter that outlines in pretty decent detail a lot of the different concerns related to climate, housing and sprawl, transportation inequity, just the process that has been used to identify the sites because it hasn't been very transparent. There hasn't been a lot of community engagement, impacts to salmon recovery and agriculture. I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the Seattle Times article that was written about this. It's very interesting because we know that, you know, there are several different counties where they're talking about potentially citing a new airport, and none of the counties want it. So it's, it's a challenging political situation where King County was taken off of the list. They said, don't identify a greenfield site in a county that has more than 2 million people. There's only one of those in Washington State. And then, you know, we're looking at places in Pierce County and Thurston County, but each of the counties where they're looking, people have said, we don't want it here. And we have this pent-up demand for transportation in the future. So I know that this is a challenging issue, but we're really concerned about both the process and what it would do to rural Thurston County if we placed it here. So we're asking for your support to oppose it.
And this is a tough one because if anyone who's used CTAC recently knows how bad it is right now. And so I fully understand the need to fix this. What's been frustrating along this path is they show this six-mile radius, you know, it's somewhere in here. And we don't know where in there, you know. There just hasn't been a lot of information. And so we can't even talk about mitigating risks where, do we even know what's going on? And, and so this whole process to this point, it's felt like we haven't been a part of it from the get-go. And so I know that we're going to have to find a solution. The state is going to need to find a solution. I don't know what that solution is. If it's not going to be a brand-new airport, is it going to be more increases of more regional airports? And I don't know what it is, and I'm not expecting you to go just say no. I think that we need to have a better input from the get-go and try to put our heads together. Okay, if we have, if we need, this has to go someplace, where can we mitigate the risks where they're not in the middle of rural Thurston County, right? Or is that in the JBLM field? I mean, we just don't know. And so this whole process, we believe, we've been in the dark. And so it's coughs a little off-guard, even though we've been, Thurston Regional Planning Council's sort of been hearing about along the way, but we thought it was Olympia Airport, and then that got taken off the list. And so we thought we were done with it. And then all of a sudden, last second, oh, no, we're talking about this. And we're like, whoa, what's going on here? So we know this is a big issue. We haven't been happy with the process. We know there has to be a solution, but we need to start, we believe the process needs to start over, and we need to be more direct with the public, too, on this. So I'm not sure you want, do you have anything you want to say on the airport? I mean...
Well, I just, you know, you look at that list of opposed, and it kind of pretty much mimics my constituency's response to there's no support column. The, I'm sure Representative Bateman's experienced the same thing. I mean, yeah, there needs to be a long-term solution, but I don't think that this is it. So...
I would just add that Senator Hunt, Representative Dolan, until Representative-elect is sworn in, and I sent a letter to the commission letting them know that we supported our communities, and we reiterated all of the concerns that we heard from every single city within the 22nd and the county. It was very clear that they're opposed. And the case hasn't been made to us that the benefits of having an airport in our community in this rural area would outweigh the harm that could be caused by transportation, climate emissions, people being displaced from their homes, communities, people owning businesses there. So we know that there's a process for the commission to get this and bring it back to the legislature, but it's pretty clear that no community is interested in having this airport. I know at one point they had said they were going to go back to the Everett site as a preference, I think because that one's already built out a little bit. So we have work to do to figure out how we're going to mitigate additional need and demand at CTAC while also making sure that our communities are going to have huge, massive, brand-new airports.
Thank you. And our next item is the long-term funding solutions to support the right-of-way initiative, housing acquisitions. Councilmember Cox?
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to hold out my hand and ask for money on this one. I'm going to shake your hand and say thank you so much for the support that you all gave to our communities with the $37 million appropriation on the right-of-way housing initiative. As Lacey is part of what's going on in Lacey with that is we have, are in the process of purchasing a motel that is going to be used for temporary shelter to begin with, placement. And gradually, within a couple of years, we hope to turn it into permanent supportive housing as we get the funds to do the necessary remodeling for a longer-term living experience there. The money that came with this included $2 million a year for a couple of years for operating expenses. We are in partnership with Lehigh, the Low Income Housing Institute out of Seattle, which will be running and overseeing the construction and all with that. But we are concerned down the road about how we're going to sustain, make this sustainable and help it, you know, pay for itself. So just want to ask you all to keep that in mind as we progress, and we'll certainly keep you informed about the progress on this project. I'm also Chair of our Regional Housing Council, and so we're also looking at ways to direct the rest of the appropriation on that. And one area where we feel like things are needing a little bit more focus, and it sounds like there's promise there, is on mental health response and facilities. And so just ask you to keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm really pleased with how quickly this region saw the opportunity and went out and had to put a plan in place to, you know, take advantage of these dollars. I am concerned as I think we're really happy with the money upfront. It comes with two years operating. And then what, right? That's, that's what we're a little bit worried about. And as we're bringing other resources online, too, as a result of these dollars, there's going to be ongoing operating expenses with that. And so there's a little bit of concern where this has obviously been a state right-of-way issue, got a bunch of money upfront, we're headed in the right direction. We just don't want necessarily to be left hanging with all the responsibility and perpetuity on an issue that started with the state right-of-way issue. So that's something we just want to kind of wrap our heads around and say, how do we keep these great, you know, we took the first step. How do we keep these operational into the future? Or is it just to be left all on our dime?
Thank you. First question, and I have a couple more comments, so we'll answer that question in a minute. But any of the home fund dollars that the county passed could be used for operational expenses for permanent supportive housing, right?
It can be considered, yeah, but...
So I'd be interested in the capital construction of utilization of those dollars. You also have to think about the operational. That's one of the factors when you think about, you build it out. In addition to that, we passed Apple Home and Health's law, bill, which has created a new program within our Medicaid agency at the state that hopefully in the long term is going to provide the, basically billing allowable for permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals. So that is a long-term solution to exactly this situation, getting these folks out of the right-of-way into permanent supportive housing and having a funding mechanism that will be sustainable for the operational expenses and costs over the long term. That's not to say that it's going to happen immediately. It will take time. So in the short term, asking for additional resources, I think, is feasible. So in the short term, asking for additional resources, I think, is feasible.
Thank you for that. And that's, I think that's a good solution as well, so I really appreciate that. Next up is our continuing focus on the I-5 corridor between Mounts Road and Tomwater. Councilmember Kunkel.
Well, thank you both for being here today. We really appreciate it. And I know that neither of you are, you both know about this issue. This has been an ongoing issue. All of us have driven along I-5 around the Mounts Road and Tomwater areas, and it is a mess. I remember commuting in the early 90s when I was still wearing the uniform to Fort Lewis, and boy, was that a pain in the butt. We had some choice words for that particular area around Mounts Road as we were trying to commute back and forth. And it's only going to get worse if we don't do something about it. First of all, we want to show our appreciation that the legislature has secured 75 million in the Move Ahead Washington package for Nisqually River Delta preliminary design. We appreciate that effort, but we need to put emphasis on getting this project on the front burner. So we've seen this before, it's been a multi-year request. This is a stretch of freeway that is vital to the state's environmental, commerce, and transportation priorities. The current setup restricts critical ecological functions impacting salmon survival, is at high risk of being overtopped by major flooding event, which would immobilize commerce and transportation and readiness for JBLM. We support future investments in the segment of I-5 corridor to ensure environmental resiliency, reliability, and efficiency in our nation, in our regions, and state's most significant transportation corridor. So where our concerns are is we know that we need to act quicker to save I-5 at the Nisqually River Delta. The governor's proposed budget starts this project in the 2030s, and a lot of us believe this is too late. This is more urgent and needs to be done. Through the Delta, I-5 generates erosion that threatens to undercut I-5 by 2040 to 2050 and restricts critical ecological functions impacting salmon survival. So we all know that it's a problem, and we want to put it on the front burner to get some solutions to fixing this problem so that all these things we can avoid in the near future.
I'm sorry. I know this is an ask you're going to be hearing a lot, right? Everyone in the transit who got funded says we want our project moved up sooner. And I get that. I think you guys know how important, particularly in this issue is, like, as Councilmember pointed out, this has been an issue for a long time. You know, it feels like at any moment that a flooding event could happen and take out I-5 right there, and now we're in trouble, right? Now it's emergency time, and this is going to get a lot more expensive without doing all the planning and everything we need to do ahead of time. And so with this not even showing up in the 2030, it's not even funded this decade. First of all, I want to thank, Andrew's not here, Representative Barkus isn't here, they called this the Barkus Bill, right? Because he was pretty instrumental in making sure this went through and for us. And I know we've had some go arounds, talk about some language, you know, between Pierce County and Thurston County since then. I think we worked a lot of that out. But I think that, it's like we feel like we won the big fight, but we're losing the war now because it's just the money's so far out that this is only one segment of this entire corridor. It's a very critical segment, but it's like if we can't even get to, if we can't even get to the money until the 20, you know, 2030s, we're way behind the ball on this. And I remember when we were looking at the, through the, you know, the package through JBLM corridor, you know, at least they had a timeline that they could count on a little bit more and that went on. What was unfortunate is as soon as we got through that project, it was Lacey really one of the first jurisdictions and saying, hey, what next? Hey, what about this next segment of this corridor? And we've had to start from scratch, and here we are, you know, and this is obviously the 75 million is only a small section to get through design because then we're going to have to go to a federal ask because we know that ultimately this is going to be a lot more than 75 million. And but if we can't even get to the money to get to a federal ask until the next decade, I mean, I hope, I hope we can figure this out. So, Councilmember.
Just to, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to add to what the mayor said, I think what occurs to me is that if we're not able to advance when we get the funding to do some of these necessary repairs on this stretch of road, I hope we get that $500,000 for the Emergency Operations Center because we're going to need it. If I-5 falls into the water, it really is quite scary.
Yeah, good point. I would contend that this was a priority 20 to 30 years ago. I think we've been putting it off for too long. And I know that as you go around, you're going to hear about this one issue quite a bit. And we just want to know that Lacey's on board with putting this on the front burner. We hope that we see some resolution. Thank you.
Yep. This is a national security priority too. I was a logistics guy in the military, so, I mean, air land and sea, if you cut off, you know, we only have so many ways, east and west and north and south. We can't get to half the waterways on the West Coast, it's not good. So it's something to always think about.
Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One other thing I want to highlight or point out is we have done or are currently working on the environmental work. And having a six year delay or longer between the environmental work and then the engineering causes the potentiality of that investment going to waste and having to redo our environmental work, which could potentially even further delay it. And we really, I want to be sure I'm right, and Councilmember Kunkel mentioned it, we have, is it, this is where I could use a phone friend, it's a USGS study that says we're at risk of losing that area of I-5 as early as 2037, but definitely within the key risk area by 2040. So as we mentioned, moving six years and then potentially eight years down the road because of that disconnect between the environmental work and the preliminary engineering puts us deep into that risk zone. And that's where when we start mapping it out, we get really concerned.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? I think we're preaching to the choir here a little bit, this, that the point that Brian makes though is really important. It was all this environmental work done so far on it. If we have to wait that long and have to redo it, it's going to, I'm going to go crazy if that happens, right? If we just threw that money away for nothing after, after the tribe pitched in and everything, oh my goodness. Okay, then our last one is to address law enforcement vehicle pursuits.
I'm handling the public safety concerns. So this is the addressed law enforcement vehicle pursuits. If you have any questions or comments, myself or Chief can help out with that. So a few quick bullet points, the city's had a phenomenal police department and is committed to providing transparent and accessible public meeting, this public safety. While the city is, city recognized the need for statewide reforms, several policy changes made during the 2021 legislative session resulted in unintended consequences to put the public, general public and public safety officers in additional and unnecessary danger. We're looking to align with Association of Washington Cities and other jurisdictions. So the request is pretty simple. We asked the state legislature to clarify the ability for law enforcement to conduct vehicle pursuits using a reasonable suspicion standard in specific situations.
I know you know all about this. Chief, do you want to add anything to this and where are we at in this process?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. This is really, this is really important, so I want to make sure, Chief.
It's already on, Chief.
Well, thank you so much for letting me be heard on this topic. It is critical, the unintended consequences that have occurred since the changing of the pursuit standard to probable cause. We've had a doubling of grand theft auto in the state. And I got to tell you, the city of Lacey does not engage in a lot of pursuits, but the fact that folks know that once they get into a car, they're home free tells us a lot. And we've had folks flee on us, we've had people drive by officers, we've had people crash into cars, and just generally not submitting to authority as they would under the old standard. So it is critical we return back to the reasonable suspicion standard.
Do you have, I know you've been working a lot on this, Jessica, what's your, where we're at in this process?
You know, I haven't seen the new proposal this year yet, we're just starting, but I know that we're going to have a number of pieces of legislation to provide refinement and clarification. The Chair of the Public Safety Committee, you know, Roger Goodman, he's proposing some of that. And I know you noticed the Blake decision in here too, that's something we also have to address. I'm interested in meeting with you during sessions so I can get more of this input and find out if you have actual technical language change recommendations or getting input on the legislation that's proposed. So I'll do a check in on that.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you so much. Go ahead.
I completely agree with you, Chief. And the, I just talked with the Mason County deputy, I live right on the Mason-Thurston border, and the number of cars just in the last few days from Seattle end up there. And he shared with me a number of the same issues that you bring up, and I just hope that the legislature acts as quickly to correct this as they did to damage it. We have the field study, we don't need to study this anymore. It's not working, and we need to fix it. And the legislature needs to move quickly, as quickly as they did to make the errors that it made.
Well, I think we had a good compromise in place. Unfortunately, that bill died at the end of last session, it didn't come up for a vote, but both houses were in approval of it, just didn't go to our vote. I think that's a good place to start, so we don't have to repeat a lot of the work that's already been done, but it's certainly a good starting point. So I really appreciate the work you're both doing on that. Thank you.
And wherever you need, if you need me to come and testify, wherever you need, let me know, I'm here to help. We're all here to help. Thank you, Chief. And then, do you have anything? Okay.
I was going to hand it off to Shannon.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember, and good evening again, Senator McEwen and Representative Bateman. You'll notice a couple of materials out in front of you, and we just went in detail through our legislative priorities agenda. And one thing I want to point out with this agenda is we have obviously packed it full of a lot of information on priorities. I don't even think we have quarter inch margins on this document when you look at it. So there's not a whole lot of space for, you know, any additional comments and broad policy statements within these priorities. And so this year, a new document that we've put together is the second document that is in front of you, and that's our 2023 Legislative Manual. And the purpose of this manual is to provide that broad perspective on certain items, as well as reiterate the priorities that are on our legislative priorities. But it's, you know, things that we've been tracking throughout the legislature the last couple of years that we want to put our take on and make sure that we are able to, you know, pivot should any, you know, bills or items come up related to those subject matters, as well as just increase the transparency with where the city stands on a number of items. So if you take a look at the Legislative Manual, there are 50 or so items in here, and I do not plan on going on every, through every single one of them here tonight, but you do see that what this really tries to get at is a broad catch of what the city's stances are on particular items.
So I just want to wrap this up by thanking you for coming here. We also want to let you know that, of course, the city of Lacey is, works closely with the Association of Washington Cities, the South Sound Military Communities Partnership, the Thurston County Shared Legislative Agenda, and especially the South Sound Military Communities Partnership and the City of Lacey, you know, we've been working together from the beginning. And so there's been a lot of important accomplishments around that, and, you know, that's a great organization that's doing a lot of great work. You know, the other thing that at some point I would like to share with you is the ongoing success that we've had with our Lacey Veteran Services Hub. This is, we've had help from the state, and it is really beyond our wildest dreams of what we've been able to do to help veterans and their families with this facility. I had a neighbor who has been in part time work, a veteran, he was going to be on the streets because he just cannot find work right now. And, you know, he's a vet, and I go, hey, you need to go to Lacey Veteran Services Hub. And he's like, no, 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 no. He's fighting me on, fighting me on it. He was able to go there and get his rent paid and his utility, Lacey wire bill paid. And there's stories like that from all over Washington, South, Southwest Washington. You know, this is not a resource that's just serving Lacey, it's serving veterans and their families, and has become the model to serve veterans across the United States. And it's something that we're proud of in the city of Lacey, it's something that everyone in this area should be proud of. And so if you haven't had a tour, I would, I would love to go show you a tour. The city of Lacey has been footing the bill from the get go on the Veteran Services Hub. And we've been happy to do it, but we need to look at, at some point, having a conversation about, you know, should Lacey be footing the bill on a services that is serving more people not from the city of Lacey than, you know, it's serving people from all over Washington State, especially Southwest Washington, because they know they only have to go one place and then get all their services, one place. It's, there's nothing like it in Washington State. So I just want to throw that out there, I'd love to give you a tour, show you what we're doing there. It's been an amazing success story, and I know the state has partnered with us in the past, and we need to continue to work with, you know, Washington Department of Veteran Affairs and try to figure out, you know, what's a long term funding model that doesn't just include Lacey right now, and Thurston County has helped as well, but.
Thank you for that, I'd love to take a tour, I haven't been able to get out there yet. I was wondering, Mayor, if you wanted to hear about what we're working on this.
Yes, and so that's the last thing. I'm going to turn it back over to you, saying.
Perfect.
Now, what are your priorities and how can we help you with your priorities?
So I'll go ahead and kick it off, since I'm already on the mic. So we're really excited in the House to be working collaboratively to address our housing crisis with Republicans across the aisle. I will be releasing, I just dropped a bill with Representative Barkus that will allow for the construction of middle housing statewide, like I did last year, I saw that in your manual, and I think that we have a little bit different of opinion, and I'm happy to talk about that more. But what we know is in Washington State, we're 140,000 homes short today. That means we would need to literally triple the pace of construction. Middle housing accounts for about 5% of building permits statewide, and we truly believe that we need to make it easier for property owners to make their own decisions about the property that they have and adapt and be able to serve the market for things like ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, which happen to be very marketable and more affordable for first time families. First time homeownership is only affordable in three counties in Washington State, and they're all on the east side of the mountains. So the inability of us to build housing in cities is impacting our rural neighbors too and increasing the costs of homes there. So what we're trying to do in the House at least is focus on supply side bills, things that will make it easier to construct housing, and we're working with the Republicans, and next week, we're going to come out with a package that's supported by Democrats and Republicans, things like making it easier to split a lot so you could build a smaller home and actually own it and build that equity and retain that, actually permit timeline reform, impact fee abatement, we have a law for that currently, we want to streamline that statewide to make it more consistent for developers, an ADU bill, legalizing ADUs, also transportation oriented development. So really excited that this is something that we can come together on, you know, bipartisan, and address an issue that's really critical to folks all over the state. I know Malcolm, you and I have talked about that. So that's my biggest piece of legislation. I'm also working on behavioral health, some healthcare related issues. Happy to talk more with you online, offline about that, and I have a couple other housing bills, but you'll be seeing a lot of those housing pieces of legislation next week.
Great, thank you for that. And Lacey's very supportive of a lot of what you're talking about. Obviously, we've been leading on ADUs in the state with our pre-approved program, obviously we won the governor's award for that. I think if you, this is a good opportunity for the city of Lacey, I think, who does this right. If you talk to anyone, talk to the realtors, talk to whoever, I mean, we have found a way to try to expedite, especially on the housing side, and make it a clear process. That's what hangs up a lot of people's, the process is, takes so, takes a long time as well. So if we can help in Lacey on that, we're happy to do it, and we're, I'm happy to meet with you more on this issue and see if we can do.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, appreciate the time to be here tonight and look forward to representing your city in the legislature. And I just, I'll also go back to your agenda here real quick, and I made the decision to leave the appropriations side and go to transportation, and so that fits quite neatly into some of your major priorities here, and so I look forward to working on those. I'm a big believer in. I'm a big believer in driving infrastructure. And it helps economic development overall, you know? And we can have the debate on other issues, other policy issues. But at the end of the day, you know, if we don't have the infrastructure to enact policy, it doesn't matter. So I'm a big believer in that. You know, I think one of the advantages you have with two separate delegations representing the city is it allows us to divide more. I look forward to working with Representative Bateman and the rest of our colleagues here. And, you know, on your capital request, it makes it easier to get more of those when you have more members representing your area. So look forward to doing that collectively, and I think we can get a lot of this done. So again, my focus will be on the infrastructure side. I totally agree with you on the transportation issue on the I-5 corridor. We face a similar situation in the Mason-Kitsap border area that goes back to when I entered the Navy and came out here in the early 90s. And it was an issue then. And there's an old Asian proverb that says, "A good time to plant a tree is today; a better time was 20 years ago." You know, we're seeing that with I-5, right? And so, you know, certainly getting that bumped and moved forward quicker is a top priority. So want to be a resource to all of you. Don't hesitate to reach out to my office and look forward to working with you. So thanks for having me tonight.
Oh, great. Well, I will be working with you live. And I'm the Chair of the Transportation Policy Board for the Thurston Regional Planning Council, so I'm on the Hill every year as well. So we'll be talking with you soon. Is there anything else, Brian? Or?
No. Thank you. Excellent job by councilmembers. And you, Mr. Mayor, and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Well, appreciate it. We are going to adjourn for about five minutes, so we're going to go to DIAS and do our last little bit of business. But thank you for coming here. We look forward to working with you. Adjourn for like five minutes.
This Lacey-Council meeting back into order. It's been an interesting first meeting. We kind of had this hybrid start for the year, but we just went through our state legislative priorities and had a good discussion with several of our state legislators. But now we'll go back to our approved agenda, and we're on proclamations. And we do have a proclamation for Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And we'll start with Councilmember Vasquez.
Thank you. Whereas the civil rights movement in the 1960s profoundly impacted the course of American history and continues to shape the direction and debate of our society. And whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a civil rights leader, devoted his life to the nonviolent advancement of civil rights and public service. And?
Whereas Dr. King believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all and challenged all community members to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of the United States of America. And?
Whereas Dr. King's dream is no less inspirational and important today than when he first expressed it 60 years ago. And?
Whereas even with the progress achieved during the civil rights movement and subsequent decades, inequalities, injustices, racism, and other forms of discrimination and oppression are still prevalent in our society. And?
Whereas Dr. King's life was struck down by a bullet of bigotry on April 4, 1968, but his dream of pursuing a world free from prejudice and injustice lives on. And?
Whereas we honor and celebrate Dr. King's memory. And importantly, we also preserve his legacy, one that calls upon all of us to stand up against injustice and protect our most sacred tenets of democracy. And whereas Dr. King always led by example and provided a framework for how each of us can shape the future by calling out injustice and continuing to work toward a more equitable society.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to hereby proclaim January 16, 2023, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Lacey. And I urge all community members to take this opportunity to reflect upon Dr. King's vision and to join me in rededicating ourselves to continuing to advance the principles of justice and equity for all. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, to date January 5. Come up and accept this.
Thank you. There you go. You want to say a few words?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, and of course, to the council, I greet you for the very first time. My name is Reverend David L. Reeves. I hail from, of course, the state of North Carolina, newly relocated, of course, to Thurston County. Certainly not a stranger to the state of Washington. I served some time ago at Fort Lewis, Washington, in the United States Army. And of course, ETS from there, had an opportunity to work on a couple city council and county council campaigns down in Pierce. And some of those persons are leaders in our Senate and Congress, our House at this point. And so God be praised for them. Let me just say how appreciative I am of this council and how, in a very real way, we look forward to building relationship and doing the work of community together. I'm very much so a community person and look forward to ways we can tackle some of the real difficult and tough issues in community. While we may differ and have different opinions as it relates to where we stand on faith, there's certainly some common ground in terms of moral issues that we can speak to. And so I look forward to working with you. And I just wanted to share with you that on January 16, 12 noon, at the New Life Church there over on Pacific Avenue, we'll be having a citywide celebration. And some of you, of course, will be there with us. And I'll let the surprise speaker be a surprise in and of itself. So just thank you so very much. And with that, I'll give your time back.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Of course, New Life has been a wonderful community partner, and we look forward to working with you on this issue and then many other issues. And we have in the past, and we'll continue to do that. So thank you for your service to this community as well. So next on our agenda, we, yep. Make sure the councilmembers all get those. We do have one agenda I am left on the city manager's report that we didn't get to, and that's, I'll turn it back order to our assistant manager.
Mayor and Deputy Mayor and councilmembers, we have one final agenda item, and that is award of a public works contract. And I will turn it to our Public Works Director, Scott Egger.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. So I'm here to present on the 2022 Overlay Utilities Project. So staff respectfully request that you award Lacey Contract Number PW 2022-38 to the Low Bitter Miles Resources LLC from Puyallup in the amount of $2,576,491.75. From the map there, you can see the location of where we will be installing these water lines and performing overlays on the roadway screen. I think the font's a little bit small there, but City Hall is the red star there at the upper portion of the photo. You have kind of Woodland Square Loop there to the left of College Street, 14th Avenue from College to Slater Kinney, and then Franz there on the right. There's over 2,300 feet of water line that's going into these projects. So this is being driven by the need for the utility. And then the pavements are such that they do warrant grind overlay at this time as well. So with that said, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
I'd move to award Lacey Contract Number PW 2022-38 to Low Bitter Miles Resources LLC from Puyallup, Washington, in the amount of $2,576,491.75.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, Councilman?
Good time to be bidding. Twelve bidders, and from first to last, it was over $1 million saved. So that's all good news. But most, all the bids were local companies bidding on. And I think the furthest one was Woodard.
Miles.
Well, the furthest one away, I think, was Woodland or Monroe.
Quick question, Scott. Did you throw out a timeline on that?
Yeah, there's 60 working days in this project. It'll begin spring of this year. In terms of the word we're getting from our suppliers, the delays to getting, you know, pipe and other products, delays are shortening. So we're in a better position to move ahead. And in terms of prices of pipe, I think I came to you in November with another utility overlay project. The price of pipe is about the same. So it's, the price isn't dropping, but at least availability is improving.
Thank you.
So just a quick question. This area in particular, reason why we've looked at this is obviously Lacey Midtown, right? And we've looked at this area in particular, knowing that all, quite a bit of new activity is coming to this area, including some more housing. And there was going to be a need to upsize on our utilities there. Is this going to be possibly addressing that need, the additional maybe outflow that's going to happen from the multifamily housing that's in that area? And is it going to be enough to prepare us for the future? Because we have talked about actually using some economic development dollars to help do that, to make sure some of those projects can go forward.
So that's an excellent question. The MJR submitted their plans for utility extensions for their project that will occur there adjacent to Hunnamer Park. They actually just submitted those. And this project is strictly waterline, but they will be adding water. They will be adding sewer as part of their project. And actually, the limits of it butts right up against what you see here. So that is being addressed, but not to this project?
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Then there's a motion, a second, to award this Lacey Contract PW 2022-38 to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
But I do have, I do have one comment.
That motion, yes, it carries? Go ahead.
Before, I ran out of time. The 14th project will be, you know, happened before the next phase of College Street, right? So that we wouldn't have to dig it up twice after we redo the next phase of College Street.
So this will butt right up against that. But you're correct.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's good news. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other items.
Okay. Then we're on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
I do not have a report.
Councilmember Cox?
Of course I have a report, right? Well, I'll keep it short. At our LOT meeting on December 14, probably the most interesting item there was that LOT has received the 2023 National Association of Clean Water Agencies Award, which recognizes its commitment to its reclaim water infiltration study as the winner of that award. It says, you know, that recognized the four main tasks of the study, which were to characterize water quality in terms of wastewater, reclaimed water, groundwater, and surface water, to evaluate treatment effectiveness, to assess risk, and to do a cost-benefit analysis. And this award is going to be presented in February at the National Association of Clean Water Agencies Conference. Unfortunately, I'm not one of the LOT board members that gets to go to that because it's in Sonoma. But anyway, so I'll leave the LOT report at that. We will not be meeting in January, so next meeting will be February. And then, just briefly, on the Regional Housing Council, we approved and sent to county commissioners a recommendation that the county spend around $111,000 on a six-month pilot project to monitor campfire safety at homeless encampments. This is a project that primarily will be led by the, it's called OLE, oh my gosh.
OLEMAP?
OLEMAP, yes, thank you. Organization. But they've been working in conjunction with the Olympic Clean Air Agency on that. And it's, you know, it's about both the health and safety of the camp residents, but it's also the health and safety of the surrounding areas, too. Because depending on what's burned, it can be very toxic smoke that gets into the air. And the other thing is, we spent some time talking about the citizen advisory boards that are being stood up for to support the Regional Housing Council and to bring community input to that agency. And so application forms are now... And so application forms are now, just like yesterday, I think, were made available. And anybody in the community who is interested in doing this should look on the Regional Housing Council site that is part of the Thurston County website. And a big deadline coming up here is January 23 to get those in. So I hope people will consider joining that. We particularly want to hear, I mean, I know there will be a lot of interest from the social service communities, but we also want to hear from builders and realtors and other elements of the community as well. So thank you, and that's my report.
Councilmember Greenstein?
Just one report. TCOM 911 met yesterday. It's a short report because the vast majority of the meeting was actually taken up with executive sessions that I won't be reporting on today. We did get an update, though, on the radio project that we've been working on for quite some time now. Still moving along rather slowly, but moving, should still be operational for the first quarter of 2024. That's the plan. Unfortunately, we also got a report on several recent burglaries and vandalism at several of our radio stations, totaling about $20,000 in lost equipment. They're breaking in and stealing the backup batteries on some of that equipment. We've had three recently, two at the Bald Hill site, and one, believe it or not, on the site that's on JBLM. So that was kind of a surprise, but yeah, so three of our sites have been burglarized, and again, the public is, you know, it's costing the public $20,000 just on those three. So we are looking at options on what we can do to make those sites more secure. And then last, we also, at the end of that meeting, did approve a new labor contract with the telecommunications. It was some significant changes to that contract, but very necessary, and hopefully will put us in a position to be able to both retain and recruit new people for as telecommunications. We are still, at this point, 11 staff members short, so we are -- people are having to work a lot of overtime and to fill those positions, because as you know, it's critical that that operation be manned 24/7, as it is the 911 Service Center. That is my report. I do want to make just one quick announcement for those who may be interested in the public and certainly on council. This Saturday at 11:00 a.m. will be the memorial service for Virgil Clarkson, former mayor of Lacey. That'll be at the First Methodist Church on Legion in Olympia. So I just wanted to make people aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Stedman?
No report.
Councilmember Kunkel?
I have one from SWAC. We met yesterday. In our meeting, we covered our legislative pre-session update priorities. Focus was on supporting extended producer responsibility, restore the solid waste collection tax to Public Works Assistant Account, and to modernize solid waste program funding. I have a capital facilities projects update. The SCADA system that they're using at the landfill is anticipated to be complete by the end of this month. Our flare system modification should be completed in the first quarter of this year. Pump system upgrade is coming, and construction on that should begin this year. Tech upgrade for new security cameras is in progress, and our main compactor is slated to be replaced, which is a big deal, and the process of fabricating and installing something of that magnitude is likely going to take all year to do. For our master plan briefing, I did email the council the master plan for 2023, and in the meeting, we covered some of the highlights of that. For our solid waste managers' report, the staff held a briefing with the county commissioners on the draft concerning the compost procurement ordinance on November 30. The board approved moving forward to the next step, which is to schedule public hearings to consider the ordinance, and then at the upcoming January 10, County Commissioner Meeting, Public Works will be requesting that the commission set a public hearing for Tuesday, the end of the month, January 31, at 3:30, to receive testimony and consider the adoption of the procurement ordinance. And last but not least, and this is kind of a downer, but the free mulch program at the waste, at the work, is ending at the end of January. So mulch will continue to be available on a first-come-first-served basis through the end of this month, but customers will need to find alternate sources beginning in February. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez?
No report, except to mention that I did previously this evening send out the draft Thurston Regional Planning Council letter regarding the airport sighting, and in my email, I mentioned that TRPC was meeting tomorrow. That was incorrect. That meeting's actually been shifted to the second Friday of this month, which is next Friday, the 13th. Spooky. And the Thurston Health, Board of Health meetings are going to start happening in the new county facilities that are close to the Food Co-op and much closer, sufficiently to me, than the other side of town up where the courthouse was. So I'm looking forward to our Board of Health meeting, which is now a little closer to Lacey.
Well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. 2023, boy, you know, it seems like 2022 went by, last couple of years went by in a blink of an eye, and here we are at 2023. But I hope everyone had a safe and happy new year, and I wish everyone health and happiness throughout this year. 2023 is a big year for the city of Lacey. We're going to be selecting a new city manager, and next week, we're going to get an update on that, where we're going to finally go out, and we've been involved in that process, but it's going to go out to the public and really get underway, and so it's an exciting time here in the city of Lacey. As always, keep it classy, Lacey. I'll call this meeting adjourned.